6 PM on October 23rd, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Project Select Board at work. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you want to amend it?
Well, I didn't know if I could.
Yeah, you can amend it to add that portion and we can approve it with time if you want.
Could we add, like just before adjourn, any new or old business? If nobody objects. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, approve the minutes of the regular October 10th Select Board meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Open public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
We got one here. Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, sorry.
Couldn't see into the crowd.
One exciting thing, Izzy Grab achieved the goal of her 100th goal, and so she's the fourth phantom in phantom history. Keegan McDonald and then to Karen, Girls, Abby and Mag. So that's a pretty nice club to be a part of. It was very exciting.
Huge milestone.
And then on November 5th, which is a Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, our yard, along with the ladies auxiliary of the fire department, will be hosting a celebration for the 125th birthday of the Proctor Fire Department at the high school gym. And that's open for everyone in town. So we hope everyone will come and celebrate the fireman. We have some guest speakers coming. We'll have goodies to eat. And there'll be a little program to honor the firemen. So it would be lovely if people would come and support and recognize and just, you know, thank the firemen, the volunteer firemen.
What day again?
November 5th, which is a Sunday, and it's from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. It's in the gym and we'll enter through the back of the gym.
That's the day you set the clocks back too, so.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's Saturday.
I remember the 100th anniversary.
Mm-hmm, that was a big deal. That was more like a fall festival.
Yes.
Yeah. But we're gonna have some giveaways. We'll have some things, so we'll try to dress it up as pretty as we can.
Excellent. All right. Review the bills, expenditures and sign Select Board orders. Did everybody have a chance to sign the orders?
Yes.
Yes.
Request for VOT for inspection of the bridge over railroad tracks.
Yes, Bruce reached out to them and that's why I sent the email to everybody in their packet just about having them come and do an inspection of the bridge, which I'm not, I haven't heard anything back from them. I don't think Bruce has either. So maybe it's worth giving them another hope because it is kind of looking a little weathered and, as you all know, so.
They didn't even respond.
Pardon me?
No, that after the last one, we reached out to them. So I'll follow up with that. I'm sure even if they come and inspect it, they're probably not gonna do anything to it until they feel they want.
It'd be nice to get into the queue at some point though.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I thought, just to.
And if we keep rattling their cage.
You know, I got an idea, probably won't happen till spring, but I wanted to get it on their calendar early.
Sooner or later.
It's in bad shape.
Okay, anything else about the bridge? MTA P, excuse me, the Municipal Technical Assistance Program, pre-approved for assessment, Devin Eri.
Hello, hello, back to the ads here. Thanks for having me on such a short notice.
Well, thank you for coming. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So I won't take up too much of your time today. This is really just an introduction into the program. Go over things high level, have you sort of think about it? And then we can meet up again and, you know, two weeks a month and talk about what it looks like for the town. So for all of you that don't know me, Devin Eri, I'm the Executive Director at the RPC. Took over for Enbo last July, certainly been here, crazy. So although I'm here with you all tonight, likely another planner will be taking this to the next step. We're actually hiring for this position right now. But until that position comes on and is filled, I'll be kind of your point person for the short term. So Judy was very proactive and asked me to come speak to you all right after the program was opened up to additional towns, which is great. Try to get you in the hopper and see if this is a good fit. So high level, what this program is, it's aimed at municipal capacity and unlocking grant funding for smaller towns with limited capacity to identify, secure and manage federal funding. So the governor during the Budget Adjustment Act worked with some legislators to form this new program. It came out really intended through the Budget Adjustment Act to allocate some resources directly to RPCs to work with towns that were highest need. So to figure out what those towns were with, you know, the highest need, they created this community index, which basically ranks towns by both capacity and need. I provided the most recent list of pre-approved towns. So for the first six months of the program or so, the towns within 75, the top 25%, sorry, 75% above were pre-approved for the program. So you can see those now in our region, Ira Benson, Mount Tabor, Timoth, West Haven, Paulette and Middletown made that first cut. A couple have signed on, a couple are still thinking about it and a couple have waived the program altogether. So at its heart, what this would allow the town to do is if there is an eligible project, the RPC will work with the town to really flesh out what that project is. If it's an eligible one, we'll start to identify potential funding sources and a lot of these are part of the Infrastructure Act or ARPA at the state level. So there are certain buckets of funding, you know, that the town may be eligible for. And then really it's from concept to completion. You know, we would help apply for the funding and then manage the project in the funding all along way at no cost to the town, which I think is the most important part of this program. And we can get into that in a second. So the buckets of projects, and this is really where the rubber meets the road, are listed at the bottom here and they can be grouped into five major categories. Water, wastewater, that's the big one. There's a lot of money out there. Housing is another one. Obviously, we've heard that's, we're in the middle of a crisis, that Rutland region is certainly not immune to that. And for all of you who may not know, we just completed a regional housing needs assessment with Vermont Housing Finance Agency. Happy to share that with you all. It's on our website. It provided a lot of good information, whether it's part of this program or not. Community Recovery, Workforce Development and Business Board, super broad category. It really depends on the project. Same with climate change mitigation and resilience. You know, some of that, we're now hearing they're allowing towns to use this program as part of their flood recovery, especially bigger recovery projects. I know Proctor wasn't nearly as hard hit as a lot of the communities, so it might not be a good fit. And then there's this other economic development project bucket, which, you know, is very ill-defined and I think that's somewhat intentional. But more than anything, you know, this is subject to subject to approval by the state. That's true for really all of the projects, you know. The agency of administration is the one administering the program at the highest level. And they're asking us whenever we're working with the town, when we come up with that sort of marquee project to make sure it passes muster with them. So they're gonna have to have final approval on everything. So that's the primary list right there. You know, first blush, you know, is anything jumping out? It's like, oh yeah, you know, we've been talking about wastewater expansion or water supply expansion or upgrades of the the community facilities. Anything on this list that is in the works or somewhat fleshed out?
Well, we've been talking quite a bit about our wastewater treatment plan and needing to replace the lagoons. And so I don't know, it's not an expansion. Would that still be covered under the?
It may, it very well may be. I know that it's not necessarily dependent on an expansion. You know, it could be an upgrade or efficiency project. Now, has there been anything done with scoping those? Have you worked with an engineer?
That's in progress right now.
Yeah.
It is, perfect.
And it's something that we need to really address and take care of, like within, like, like this year we have to start planning for because it has to be done.
We're on borrowed time right now with that.
Well, that would be a good fit because this has a very short timeline as well. You know, they're looking at us to have projects identified by the end of the calendar year and then quickly move into sort of applying for funding, lining that, those remaining tasks up right away. Because just like your local ARPA funds that I assume you provided revenue replacement, that had a sunset of 2026. So a lot of these funds that we're talking about are in that same category. They, you know, need to be expended or allocated by 2025, spent by 2026, so.
Yeah.
That could be a good one. And you said it's the lagoons?
Yeah, it's our wastewater treatment.
Gotta replace the liners and.
The liners are the big thing.
Yeah.
Dispose of the waste in there. You don't need any fertilizer, do you?
No, I'm all set, yeah. So I thought you were liners and sludge, okay. Do you guys bring your sludge to the city typically?
No, we actually, that was part of the holdup is because of when COVID came, a lot of those places stopped letting people bring it. They're just starting to open up again and stuff. So and that's very, it's costly and so it's something we have to.
You know, there's no place to put the the sludge that's in there. They were trucking it to Canada, but I guess that closed off. And there isn't any other place that they know of. That's holding getting, holding us getting the dollar value of this project at the moment.
Okay.
And we aren't dealing with a lot of that situation.
You could bring it wrong enough.
You know, there's not that many lagoons in the state that are licensed, you know. So hopefully we get to the top of the list on that.
That's probably the biggest bucket of funding that's even available is for those projects. So I think that could be a very, very good one and this might be really perfect timing. So, okay. Anything else?
That's the big one.
That's the big one. That's kind of perfect, honestly. It's square on the head of the nail for that. On the next page, I just included what tasks were being asked to perform and that are eligible under this program from the RPC standpoint. For those communities that are less sure about their projects than Proctor sounds like they are, you know, we are, it is eligible to do a community needs assessment. That can look a bunch of different ways. I don't think that's appropriate in this case. So we'd probably be moving more into task two, which is the opportunity assessment that's searching for those funding sources that are the best kids. And then moving down the line, it's really about applying, managing and those things. Now, task five is sort of that other task, other capacity building activities, again, subject to approval. We haven't had anything so far in any of our meetings that met this criteria. Again, doesn't sound like it would apply anyway, so. And then on the last page, I just included some statements out of your hazard mitigation plan and your town plan if there weren't ideas right at the top of your front of mind. But again, I don't think you even need to worry about that page because it sounds like you've got your project. So next steps, what this looks like. The Select Board needs to make a formal vote in open meeting, either accepting or waiving the program. And then that would, by accepting the program, you would make yourself eligible and enter, and then we would begin the process from there. Ultimately, once you've accepted the program, we would then work to create what's known as a statement of work. And that's required by AOA to sort of move forward. And that's really just saying, here's the project, here's how much, you know, we think it might cost. Here is the funding source that we're pursuing to pay for that project. So, I mean, do you guys know roughly that engineering report with the timeline for completion?
No, I'm waiting right now for one of them to do one of their reports. But I think they're, they'll get that part to me soon, so they're working pretty close, so.
Do you think the whole thing can be wrapped up by the end of the year?
I, I think so from the sounds of it, yeah.
That was the plan from A and E to have it to us before the end of the year.
Right, so.
And who's in that work?
Oliver, John Elliott.
Oh, good, yeah. Okay, so once we have that statement of work and then we can really start moving along all the pieces of getting, getting the funding in place. Obviously, it's still, a lot of these are competitive, so it's not a guarantee that this would be high enough on their list to make it on. But this gives us every opportunity to try to make that happen. So we'll see if that holds water when we get to it. But it does sound very promising of all the meetings I've had. There has not been a sort of perfect fit like it is today. So that's encouraging to, to hear that from you all.
Now, do they look at it by priority in terms of their index?
No.
Okay.
No, well, we don't know. We don't know, we haven't got that far. That's a good question. I don't think so. Ultimately, I believe each project will be considered, you know, in their own distinct sort of light, so. And as far as I know, you know, AOA and these granting agencies, I don't know how much communication there is there. It's probably gonna really be left up to us and to you guys, so. But that's a good question. It shouldn't be the limiting factor in this case.
Okay.
So should we put this on our next meeting agenda to
Yes.
have action on and then we can go from there?
Perfect, yeah. And, I mean, judging by you all right now, it sounds like it's probably a good fit. So it may not be necessary for me to come back to that next meeting when you accept it, but perhaps the meeting after, if the timing works out, I could come back.
Is that something we can do tonight?
Well, it really is about your board rules, yeah.
So it's not on the agenda for action tonight, so.
Yeah. So probably not best of way. And, you know, even, it's good to think about it even a little bit more, you know. And that's the thing, we're not limited to one project, but they really want us to focus on one project. So again, it doesn't sound like that's an issue for you all, so.
Our next meeting is the 13th of November, so.
I will check. They've been, this list doubled and they've been piling it up and there's only so many meeting nights in the week, you know. Monday through Thursday, that is it, so.
Well, in all that, you know, I'll get like a feel of it ready if you need to come back. But if you just put on, you know, motion to accept, then I can give you.
You said 13?
Yes.
Okay. And if I can make it, I will be there. What I am telling towns, you know, generally is try to be a little bit patient. I am, you know, trying to do all these while we're filling this position, but my capacity is a little bit limited for the moment, but we'll, we'll certainly get there, absolutely. And then, you know, if I, just a couple more minutes of your time, if that's okay. As to rest here, I've sort of been doing a bit of a road show, meeting all the Select Boards and Planning Commissions and just checking in with folks. You know, we've, we've never had a bigger staff, a bigger budget, and we've never been doing more for our towns. So I think it's always a really good opportunity to hear from you all if there are any issues. And just note, we have, are kicking off a rewrite of our regional plan now essentially, and we'll be working on that over the next three years with an adoption date of sometime in late summer 2026. We have a really strong outreach strategy to make sure that all the towns have a chance and more than one opportunity to get involved, make their priorities known and have the priorities of our regional plan reflect the priorities of the town as well. Obviously, we have to balance 27 towns, but I wanted to make sure that was all on your radar and we'll be, you know, conducting a lot of outreach directly to the Select Board through Judy as well to make sure that you are all involved. And Judy's sitting on our board now, so she'll be, she'll have a good finger on the pulse about that. But otherwise, you know, I know we're working with you all on a scoping study for a shared use path or a potential. You know, we did a lot of work this summer in flood response and recovery. Again, we were pretty lucky in Rutland County, thank God. But there are a lot of new and emerging exciting programs and projects on the horizon. We're just starting a new position, Housing Resource Navigator. It's gonna be working directly with towns and developers to identify housing opportunities for investment, redevelopment and development. So they'll be reaching out to you all soon and schedule some time to see if there's something in town. And we're almost done establishing an Economic Development District for our region along with Addison, Washington and Chittenden Counties, which it basically unlocks federal Economic Development Administration funding that we've never been eligible for up to this point. So there's a lot of stuff sort of coming into the forefront that could be a real boon for the region and hopefully Proctor as well. And then I think one other thing that's worth noting is our Clean Water Service Provider Program. We're being given a million dollars a year to finance clean water projects, especially specifically stormwater, to clean up Lake Champlain. So we have just really got that program running. Judy, you might be a good municipal representative for that board when we get up and going. It's the Basin Water Quality Council.
Okay, we've been working with Waterside Consulting.
Perfect, yeah, yep. And we'll probably be able to fund some of their work too. It's kind of a unique program because it's non, typically non-regulatory projects and that's, you know, more time than we have tonight to go into. But needless to say, it is a huge slug of money year in and year out for the next several years that could be a benefit to Proctor as well. So yeah, we're working along, you know, really excited that Judy's at the helm now. Just please don't hesitate to reach out if there are, you know, concerns, questions. And just one last note, municipal planning grants and bylaw modernization grants are now available. And those are due November 1st, so not a whole lot of time left on those, but I don't know if you guys are even interested or have a project in mind for those, but it's worth remembering, so. All right, I'll finish rattling off all the stuff going on, but thank you so much for the time.
For coming over, Devin.
Absolutely, thank you, Bruce.
We'll give you a few business comments on that.
I usually don't, but today I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce, you know, make.
Yeah, yeah.
And Judy, probably have all this stuff. All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. GMT zero outages by 2030.
Yes, I just included that just so I can share the information with you all from Fremont Power that they want to have zero outage initiatives, so just big. I'm not sure the feedback, a couple of people I've talked to kind of questioning it. A lot of it's underground wiring, a lot of it's strengthening the wires that do actually exist already. And then basically just offering batteries to homeowners, which would be at the cost of the homeowners from what I understand. And they're not like a battery, they're a lottery, they're big. And you install it in your house and it would basically, if there was an outage, it would kick in, so you wouldn't have outages. It would take the place of any electrical service. So, so it sounds like a very, how can I say? The initiative seems.
Ambitious.
Yes, that's what we're just gonna do. But I just wanted to put it out there, so. 2030 will be here before you know it.
Good to know, we won't have to worry about that after 2030. Okay, Vermont State Revolving Fund for Drinking Water Feasibility Study Asset Management.
Yes, so this is one that's been in the works for the revolving loan. The application was done way back and they, they just go through the process of completing certain amount of work, giving us paperwork to sign up on. And now they just need the, the funding to be able to be transferred. So I actually have the whole loan agreement here and it requires the chair's signature and then the board's signature as well as the treasurer. So I just wanted to include it to you. It's, it's actually just an ongoing part, it's nothing new. It's part of this revolving loan for the $44,000 for the drinking water feasibility study. And here's the first tab and then.
Any questions about that? If not, is there a motion to approve the loan agreement for the Vermont State Revolving Fund for drinking water feasibility study?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Merp LOU for Energy Assessment Services.
Yes, so this was when I mentioned to you that I was trying to get the assessment, the energy assessment for both this building and the garage. This is just an agreement to go ahead and allow them to, they are doing it right now, but when it comes time, they can do the assessment because there's a first round of that more important projects. So they're taking those on. But we have been approved for this, so once it does come up and we're in the channel to get, to be the one to be assessed, we just leave this and I just need to sign it. So I thought I'd ask you all if you're able to be signing up on it.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Holiday hams from please the Select Board.
Yes, I was asked to put this on, so I did. I thought I could probably make executive decisions to do it myself, but I'd rather get the board approval. In the past, we've gotten employees' hams for the holidays and also Select Board members if they so chose. So I just thought that I would leave it up to all of you to decide what you'd like to do.
Any discussion on that? No, I think it's great for the employees. No, I think it's great for the employees. So do we have a motion to authorize the town manager to do that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Is that for employees and select board?
Um, I think, I, it's up to them. I think it was just, um, Townsend employees. Were you including the select board?
I'm just asking.
Well, I.
For the motion. I don't, I don't really care.
I'll give you my hand.
I think recently the select board hasn't gotten it, it's just been employees. I think the last two or three years. Yes. All right. Any other business at this point? If not, is there a motion to recess the Board of Selective Meeting and convene the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, delinquent accounts.
So the report that was in your packet was actually just run, but this shows just every account, not just agreements. So, um, it's really, it's really confusing, these reports, the way they're all run and the way the agreements are made, um, because some of these people who show, um, over 120, because of some deals haven't gotten paid yet, you know, like they haven't come due, um, it shows that they're late. So it, I'm not, I don't want you to really pay attention to any of the over 120, because that balance is pretty much similar to what's current. So even though those people are delinquent, in fact, they don't, a lot of them don't have agreements. So they can't be shut off because an agreement has been set within the half. There are a handful on there that do have agreements, and they have renewed. So I reached out to Public Works, um, to see if they can shut those off before the first of November, and as long as there isn't a shut-off available, they, they probably will be able to.
So Judy, some of them highlighted, some of them are checkmarked, is there?
Yeah, that's because I started to do it and then you see them explain it to me differently, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, so right now, there are one, two. Actually, seven that can actually be shut off. One is delinquent, but because there was tenants in there, we can't shut it off. So those who have agreements that haven't, that, you know, are in that situation, I'm going to send a letter to, just as a follow-up, say you do have an agreement, I'm just saying you have tenants. Um, one of the properties might even be tax sale because they're delinquent on taxes too. So that, um, you know, could be, um, part of the issue there. But there are some who just haven't paid the last two payments, even though they had an agreement. So those are the ones that, um, the guys are going to go shut off first. And they said they probably won't have any problem before it first set off, as long as, you know, they don't have to.
Would you talk to Celia and tell her, you know, I believe the board's interested in, you know, it's the only thing we got left here for.
Right.
This one, is it tax?
Oh, right, yes, yes. I have talked to her actually about that.
And the page three, uh, purchase, I believe we own that house.
Yes, we do, and that's actually up this Wednesday.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's up this Wednesday, and we actually do have a buyer for that. So, so it'll be turned over to them, it's all its own.
It'll cover everything that's doing?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Do you have any idea what the dollar minimum on that is?
On that was, ah.
Their estimate?
I can't remember what it was.
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, the Lincoln Water Sewer was just under 2,500.
Was it?
Wow, that's what's on the.
Oh, is it on this list?
Second one on page three.
Right, yeah.
And then the taxes were probably much higher.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure, yes.
Yeah, I'm trying it.
How long did they pay them for one?
Yeah, I don't think it was that much, but it's nice to know that someone's going to take it off our names.
Yes.
Yes, and then it's kind of a nice source, so that's nice.
Who paid them? I mean, didn't Paul just pass away?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Uh, some was paying them for a while.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's what took so long for us to be able to sell, although they had to open an estate and then do it that way. So it actually took an extra year, I think, for them to be able to do that.
But we're supposed to be able to recoup our lawyer's fees and everything when we sold before also, so all of that. I thought it was like $18,000 or something.
Yeah, I was going to say 16 was in my head, but you're probably right, yeah. So, um, yeah, she's just waiting to be back from the attorney, make sure it all will be done Wednesday. If not, I'll have to wait till like the bomb or something. So, because both parties are in town this week, so we'd have to redo it again anyway, if they wanted to add to the deed, so.
Yeah, let's see, we've got a bank on page one that hasn't.
Yes.
Middle of the page there.
Yeah, that's one thing I confused about the ones that have the bank on that still aren't paying on it, and they're getting rid of the properties.
I know, in this market.
Yes, exactly. Good time for us to sell those.
Anything else for delinquent accounts or for water commissioners? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Water Commissioners and convene the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything for sewer?
Um, I was going to address it in my, um, manager's report, but, um, we did have, um, Salus, they did come here last week after a follow-up meeting with the, um, A and E, and they did complete all the updates. The, um, our guys brought up valve boxes, so they installed those, and they took care of the manhole that was on Gorham Bridge Road, um, because it was above ground, so when our guys plowed, they would do that. So they brought out a different size cover, they, um, inlaid that, and then they put, um, dug around it and leveled it all up, so. And then the tracing wires were cut. There's only two places where those were, so they were cut, and then they had to build boxes, so they actually have a box there now to find where the wire actually ended. So, but they took care of everything that we asked them to, so.
Excellent. Good. No, they were good when they did that project, and it's good that they came back and got everything set up.
And, you know, with the, this spring and the rain we had this summer, we burnt iron, you know, truck.
Right.
So it was money in the bank.
I looked down a lot of manholes.
Anything else for sewer commissioners? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Sewer Commissioners and reconvene the regular select board meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Department reports, sheriff's report.
Judy, did you have a chance to talk with the sheriff about?
Yeah, the letter was in.
Yes, I included that in the packet. It's attached to the report, the last page.
Yep.
Yeah, next to the last page.
I haven't even seen this. My phone.
I would have mentioned it anyway, but I just sent you the email.
Good.
He's very, very responsive when I email them now. I email them or call them, and they call me right back, they email me right back. It's pretty impressive.
So can I just ask a couple questions about the report?
Can you?
Yeah. So I, I just, like, uh, in the second grouping where it says case number 4697, reported that the incident, incident has escalated. We're not responding due to no crime, just mental health. I found that a little, um, perplexing.
I think it's because, um, just based on my experience, like in the Merka City, they're trying to get away from, um, police officers responding to mental health issues and rely on the, um, social workers to do that.
So where do, I, I guess I would feel better if they said that they had contacted mental health or something like that, particularly when they say incident has escalated. So I guess this one has a lot of questions for me. I highlighted a lot of things when I read through it. It's kind of surprising that the sheriff doesn't come anymore, but when we leave this evening, he'll probably park someplace as we drive home, and I'm just wondering why he doesn't come anymore.
I don't think they come unless we invite them.
They used to come a lot, and we didn't, yeah, and we didn't invite them.
Yeah, they haven't for quite a while.
Yeah.
I felt like I saw somewhere in here where they contacted.
Well, there were several things, but the other thing is, it says it a couple of times in here, drive from Rutland High School traffic to Office. And then there's another one where they're driving to Rutland Town, West Rutland area, and I have no idea. We're back to these acronyms that maybe you know what they mean, RC53, for Minden Traffic Stop. You had to go pretty far in Rutland Town to get to Minden.
Right, I know.
And it certainly wasn't by way of West Rutland.
Well, what I was wondering, if they would provide us with, um, a sheet of all of their acronyms or what their, um, terms mean.
Yeah, that might be helpful.
Lots of times I read these, and I, like, I'm wondering, am I interpreting an acronym something and it's not, something totally different, just their keywords, you know?
You bring that up, and I agree, because on page six, uh, that top item, 1630 to 1700, EQ, Maintenance Fixing Front Passenger Tire. I don't know what the acronym EQ is, but again, why are we being billed for a maintenance issue on a passenger tire?
Well, I don't think we're being billed for it, he's on duty.
Yeah.
He's on duty.
Well, there's half an hour there.
Right, but if he's on duty and he has to fix a tire, he's got, he's.
Why don't they punch out?
Because they don't punch out. They, they come, I think, I think we kind of.
Four hours, one hour, two hours.
Right, but I think if they come here, they're on duty, and something has their tire, they get out, they gotta repair it, that's part of their service during that time.
We've never seen these before, I haven't.
Well, I don't think a lot of them are as detailed as these guys are.
Right, yeah, I think they're way more detailed.
You know, this computer stand, uh, broken as current, punch out, but get it fixed.
And, and that thing, on that same issue with that one about the, uh, upload of, uh, of the camera system, that was at the start of his shift. He was still at the Rutland County Sheriff Department Building, and yet we were charged for that.
Well, I think when they're sent out to towns.
He was actually at the sheriff's.
I know, but their hours are billed to towns that it outsourced to, so if he's doing work and he's on our dime, it's, it's.
Well, I guess that, that is the question. Is he on our dime when he's driving to Rutland City for Rutland High School PM traffic detail? Because that's in here twice, which I just thought was peculiar. And then he's stopping at the Humane Society to check on an abandoned, it, it's just, it's peculiar the things I think were being billed for, or maybe it's just that they are including everything. But even the language, I think, is odd now, and it says that the patrolling roads looking for more motor vehicle violations and suspicious activity. I kind of feel like they're driving through town. I mean, and what does, and I guess for me, the clarification is, what does that mean? If someone has, they go through a neighborhood and they see something at someone's house, are they stopping and issuing a ticket? Because that's contrary to what they've said here before. So it, it just seems like, personally, just as someone who's reading them and doesn't have any inside, um, knowledge, that they kind of change from every two weeks what they're doing and what their purpose is. But I do think it's peculiar when they're on our dime and they're going to another place.
Right, and I don't know, I mean, I haven't done the math to add up these hours to see, would it be feasible to invite someone from the police department to come in and just? But I also think, um, I, I mean, I think, in their, on their behalf, I think it's almost like detrimental to them by being so detailed, because then they're being picked apart, you know what I mean? Like, and if they were vague, then you'd wonder why are they putting anything in here? Right. But I think I feel that a lot of them are just so, feel they have to document everything, so when they say they're driving around town to look for, you know, perpetrators or this and that, they feel like it's better being put that way than just saying, "I'm riding around town."
Well, it used to say patrolling, um, Proctor roads or Proctor streets. It, it does make it seem like that we're all on the verge of creating some kind of crime or something. I don't know. I, I understand that, that they, but once again, the acronyms are odd, and we did ask them about that. I think the other piece is, there have been times when we've been charged for other things that were not ours, that when the questions, when push came to shove, they came back and said that that was inappropriate, that we shouldn't have been charged for it. I think that's why people read it a little more closely.
So what I'll do is I'll reach out to the sheriff and, um, ask him if there's a list he can give us just to, to better define and explain what these terms are, or these acronyms and stuff, and then ask if he, or one of the officers who's on duty most often, because it seems to be a couple of them that here all the time, um, if they can come to our next meeting to just kind of give us an overview, that way you can ask them a question, to clarify their questions.
So maybe that one that he went to Rutland, he, on the, you know, the third page.
David Suley seems to be on it.
Maybe at 1500, that's when he took off to go, go to Rutland, but, um. So.
I don't think it hurts, I mean, like, there's even one that jumped out at me. Patrol Route 3, Stevens Road, North Grove.
Yeah.
Rutland City for food.
I thought that was weird too.
Stop the Humane decided to check on injured abandoned pump to make sure it was still alive.
We don't pay our employees to go lunch. I'm not paying them to go to lunch.
It's just they're going to come in a month or so with a contract that's going to have a really big number on it.
So I, I just think, you know, just to clarify and retransmit.
Yeah, I don't think they will object to.
Right, no, I'm fine. Yep, I'll go and see if they come the 13.
Anything else in the sheriff's report? Public Works Board. That's always a very thorough report. And?
Yeah, he checks a lot.
The, the first thing on the page, certain residents for testing.
Oh, that's when they had to do the boil water and do something for.
Oh, for the park?
Yeah, and for parking place.
Okay.
Yeah, probably.
He's a little more vague than our police officers are.
Well, it looks like, it looks like this is the end of it, like, this, so it started on Tuesday, so this is whatever on Monday, this is the last line of this. So I think the page before, there's probably something above this. That's what I asked.
The curb stop at Meadow Street that couldn't shut off, they repaired that, it's working?
Um, the, there was a curb stop that, um, they didn't know if it was on their property, on our property or hers, and it was like right on the line. She was putting a, um, shut off in her house, because she didn't have one. So we needed, they were going to shut the main down instead, and then instead they took it up and they fixed it. And so it was technically on our property.
So we didn't have to shoot main though?
No.
Great.
Good. Ready to move on to town manager's report?
A while ago, we talked about getting rid of the wood furnace in the garage. Where does that stand?
Well, um, that was part of the assessment, to see if we could get funding to put some type of heating system in there. And, um, I, that's not going to be for a while, by the time we get the assessment done and stuff, so I don't know if we should revisit it. I mean, right now, that's all the heat of it. And I don't know, I mean, the heat pump's not going to.
No.
Punch that place.
The doors were wide open every morning at, you know, 7:30.
Right, yeah.
Our people.
I know, yeah, so.
I think the wood furnace is great.
Yeah, I think it's just that it's so, when they go to work in the morning, it's so cold.
Yeah.
When it's up, it's like lunchtime, you know, so if they're in there working, it's, I think it's just really cold. I don't know. I mean, the only way I think you could reduce that anyways by putting in barrier, you know, like blocking off spaces, that, where they have to, like, do work. But then, I mean, it's just a big haul garage basically, so.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, if we can do the assessment, and they find that it's feasible, and get grant money to do something, you know, some type of, you know.
And that's the assessment we just voted on.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that was a, a good idea to start with.
Start what?
You know, to have. You know, to have the wood in there, especially in the winter, to, you know, years ago, we had people that would, would take care of that, but, you know...
Like go buy a play at night?
You know, start a fire and get there at two o'clock in the morning when they maybe need to be out plowing or whatever. And if they have a breakdown, it's hard to work on stuff that's frozen, including themselves.
Town manager's report?
All right, uh, let's see. So, um, so no parking signs were put up at King Street.
Oh.
So there are three of them on both side, on each side, there's one on the end, one in the middle, and one at the top, on both sides. So, um, cars took pictures, and when we did, you can see the cars parking side of the road while they're taking pictures of the stops, the no parking signs. So, I reached out to the sheriff's department to let them know that those are there now, and to police have the officers go to that street and issue warnings, and then take them, so...
Yeah. So, we, we got six of them instead of four.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
When were the signs put in?
Today.
Oh, good. I didn't see anything on the report about it.
Yeah, I know, it's weird, because I wrote this report like Thursday, and by the time today comes, I'm like, it's like, oh, we're gonna do this, it's like, oh, we did this.
That's good.
And then the, um, the, the camera that they have, that, the monitor that, with the snake that looks, checks pipes, was broken, so they had sent it back to the manufacturer, they're gonna get it fixed, it's kind of pricey, but, um, they, they wanna get it fixed, but I also said we should probably buy another one, it has a backup, so I'm gonna apply for the passive grant, which, um, gives us thirty-five hundred dollars, and it's totally paid a hundred percent, we don't match it, and really, so they sent me one today that I think is priced around thirty-five hundred, um, so we're gonna order that, and, um, I'll apply for the passive grant, and then hopefully it'll pay for all of it. If I just get support, just...
Because I know we've had to borrow one from Pittsburgh and what have you, uh...
And he said ours is, ours is actually a lot better, the tenants is a lot better, so...
That's good.
Yeah, so, maybe we might as well use that grant, it's up there, it's one thing they cover, so, because a lot of things it doesn't cover. Um, I don't know who the waste water authority is, who's me. So there was a stormwater master plan meeting, nine, ten nineteen, and it was just a follow-up, so, um, just kind of next steps, and I'm gathering information from other towns to see what their reference have been, and so I can put it on the next meeting's agenda to talk about.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Judy? In the last couple of meetings we had with them, they, uh...
You what?
The last couple of meetings we had with that board, uh, they had a map showing, you know, our stormwater drainage system. Can we get a copy of that?
Sure.
Just to review.
Yep. Okay. Um, move the flag, so she'll see. Um, and we answered John's questions, I sent those to him, um, as well as he stopped in, and I gave him a hard copy of all the answers to the questions, and I haven't heard anything back, so...
Yeah.
So, we did our due diligence. Um, Beaver Pond Cleanup is eleven four, the grills will be cleaned and removed. File the subgranting financial monitoring worksheet with Zion for the grant, um, submitted that last week. Travis will have the remaining documents prepared before the eleven one deadline, um, the state said that if it wasn't, all those things weren't in, that I could actually file for an extension to have them filed later, but he said that he should have them all to me by that time, so, then I'll upload those. Hopefully we can leave, we can revisit that.
Have they, they paid anything on their water?
I don't believe so.
Where, where do we stand on that?
Um, well, we kind of left it, the board didn't make any decision based on his last, appearance here, so I didn't know if he wanted to put it back on or if you just to make a...
Didn't we ask him for all of the stuff in writing?
Didn't. I did, he said he would have it to me, and I haven't gotten it yet. I'll let you know if I get it this week, um, because I should have all the other stuff this week for the grant, because I need to upload it before the first, um, so I can follow up with them on that. And then, if, we don't, if you want me to put it on the next agenda, just to make a, a verbal motion, you know, so that we know that what, what you guys have decided is, is done.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like he's dragging, now he was pushing, and now he's dragging and...
Well, I will let you know if I don't receive anything by the end of the week, I mean, technically, I mean, that, the answers, the information from that night, I would like definitely this week, the other stuff I can have by next Tuesday.
Right.
Worst-case scenario, so... Signing the energy assessment, I did sign it. I'm doing a municipal budgeting with the league on the twenty-fifth. The twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I'll be attending the Vermont Town and City Management Conference. And the sheriff's department's conducting a national take-back drug event on October twenty-eighth, from ten to two, the sheriff's department, so anybody who has, like, gold prescriptions, drugs, like, they can bring them next. Eleven three, I'm going to the Rutland Regional Medical Center for portable hospital drill, and what that was, is they reached out to, um, managers and people who are on the emergency response team, um, to go through if there's an emergency event, um, how to basically create a portable hospital, you know, to kind of take care of people. So it's just like a, a thing that you go through, just be, um, educated on it. So I did reach out to Kevin Blodgy as well, and asked him if he wanted to do that, so... And I mean, anybody can go, even if it's not worth investing, if you're interested, I mean, uh, and then, um, November fifteenth, I'm attending a delinquent tax collector, um, conference, big workshop, it's actually passive, it's online. So I get educated in tax collecting, too.
Sounds like a hoof.
It's a tough subject, it'll be more interesting, that and the budgeting. And that's another thing I wanted to bring up, is budgeting, uh, we've got to start working on budgets. I am meeting with Dave Weeks tomorrow, um, good shock you came to see me, and then Dave Weeks reached out to me, so I'm meeting with him tomorrow, so he has some, um, proctor issues he wants to talk to me about, too. Um, and both of them are supposedly gonna be at the fire anniversary. And then, um, I'm meeting with, uh, someone tomorrow that, for phone updates in the town, um, not residents, but our employees, um, this apparently was somebody, it was Michael Lepreche Dunshaw? Because our phone systems are really, really old here, I mean, we don't even have caller I D or anything, um, so, and you, like, Mary can't even call out on her line, so it's just, it, they're kind of barbaric. So he's gonna meet with me tomorrow to go over, I sent him all the lines that we do currently have through Consolidated, and then he's gonna do a comparison. The trouble is, um, the town just signed up, um, this year for a three-year contract with Consolidated, and if you back out of it, um, you're, you have pay penalties, so, um, we gotta weigh those penalties versus what this might save us in the longer, so... And then I was also asked about putting a, either police presence or a speed sign at, um, entering Proctor from, um, Pittsburgh, by Lincoln Street, so... I feel like we talked about that once.
Several times.
Yeah.
Could, could we just have sheriff to put a little more down there?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I know a lot of cars kind of come in, also, it's twenty-four, I haven't seen it.
Well, it's not as bad as it used to be, though, because it drops from fifty to forty.
Right.
Like Inty Field, and then it drops to twenty-five, so...
That's all we have.
Yeah, and they did have somebody stop, like, Loop Street, that was coming in, I mean.
Anything else for town manager?
The handbook for committees, uh...
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, I found some more information on it, and like, um, the appointee letters, the applications, things like that, so I think it would be consistent, I think what would be good is if the board met first and kind of came up, you know, with that hand, or actually just adopted what was in place already that we shouldn't be doing, and then, um, reach out to each committee, and we'll know...
Get some feedback.
Yeah, and I have mentioned it at different committee meetings that I've met to, about this whole process and what we're trying to achieve, so... And I, I almost think sometime it might make more people be on committees, because if, you know, they apply, they're more like, okay, I'm not, I'm not going up against somebody that I don't think's gonna get it, they all, you know, they go through the process, so it's more kind of, you know, I don't know, I just think it might draw more people in.
You know, apparently it's been a while, because it keeps staying, you know...
Administrative assistant?
Right, that's... You know, we've been on town manager what, ten years?
Almost like that, more than that.
Well, it's like, not only the policy, but just looking back on minutes and stuff, how years back it was very regimented, you know, and like, the committees came to the meetings and reported out, you know, and stuff like that, and, uh, and gradually it just kind of got a little bit more diluted and...
So should we put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Fifteenth?
Thirteen?
Sure.
Any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some...
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.